Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council Meeting of July 2, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Vogely?
Excused.
Councilmember Tui?
Here.
President Schwab?
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to read the land acknowledgement.
The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahoechuk people, and their successors, the Tulalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted fish, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. On to old business. Do I hear motion to approve the minutes for June 25, 2025?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Seconded.
Motion and second's been made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Abstain.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council President, Council and community. This week, I had a great meeting with the Latino Civic Alliance. We began partnering with their I Am Jaguar program in mid-February to combat youth violence and just help connect kids to some good opportunities. And since that time, Everett Police Department has made 12 referrals into their program, and four of those are already graduating the program. And two of the four graduates already have jobs, and two others have made really positive changes in their life. And these are four youth that are much less likely to be engaged in criminal activity. So really excited about that partnership. I also have a request for three appointments to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board this evening. Skylar Haynes to position A2 with a term expiring 12/31/2028. Shell Graves to position 3 with a term expiring 12/31/2027. And Megan Ward to position 5 with a term expiring 12/31/2030. And I would ask for your concurrence with those appointments.
Move to approve those appointments.
Second.
Motion second's been made. Any comments? Councilmember Zarlingo?
Having read their applications and background information, I guess I was struck by a couple of things that I really want to thank them for. These are some, a couple of them are new or recent residents of Everett. They have a lot of background in this area. And I just am really appreciative of these people getting involved in our community and helping us out this way. And I hope what it leads to is more and more community involvement, and maybe some of those people will be up here one day.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes.
And a couple more things this evening. I wanted to let the council and our community know that I've asked our legal staff to work on an ordinance that will help hold individuals accountable for graffiti damage by charging them with the cost of cleanup. We have always invested in graffiti removal to help homeowners who are impacted through no fault of their own. And this ordinance should help reduce the burden of city resources and taxpayers. Requiring offenders to pay for damages sends a clear message that graffiti isn't a harmless prank, that it has real consequences. And this will also help deter gang-related graffiti in our city. And so we're currently drafting that ordinance, and I look forward to bringing it to you in the next few weeks. And then lastly, I want to just wish everyone a happy Fourth of July and encourage you to celebrate safely. We have a ton of ways to enjoy a great, family-friendly day in Everett with a volunteer-led parade, a festival at Legion Park, and fireworks that evening. Please don't set off your own fireworks, but please enjoy the city-sponsored fireworks and get settled by 10:00 PM and expect the display around 10:15 PM. And no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now it's time for public comment, which includes written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments shall be considered in the same manner as oral comments. Persons submitting comments must provide their name and city of residence to be part of our official council record. Good evening, Angie. Do we have any written comments?
Good evening, President Schwab. We have not received written comments.
Okay, how about on to public comments then?
We have three people here in chambers that wish to speak, so we'll start with John. If you could please come to the podium. And if you could please press the button on the base of the mic, the light should turn green. Yep, and then state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is John Van Dalen. I'm here in Everett, North End. And I am a ham radio operator. And this last weekend, the National Amateur Radio Relay League had what was called Field Day. Individual clubs and individuals would take their equipment out to a park or somewhere, set it up, and operate for 24 hours. Anybody who walked into the tent, in our case, we were on Legion Park, WA7LAW is our callsign, you could operate the radio because there was a licensed person there. And I'm here to thank the mayor and Scott. I think we're the two that came and viewed it. I'm sorry, I wasn't there. In the morning, I was testing seven other people to become brand-new hams. And then was there for quite a while and then had to go home. But thank you very much for the proclamation. And one of the things that, why I went for a proclamation and inviting you, because they counted points, because the whole thing is points system. And it's always nice to get extra points. So again, thank you very much. And if there's any questions?
I just want to say thank you all so much. This is, it's not only a hobby, but it's just also really important for, in case of emergency, you are our back, our backup. So really appreciate all the volunteer hours to make that happen.
I was a member of the ACS here in Everett for a while and had to get out of it because of health issues. But other than that, it's, the hobby is very, very much fun. Been at it almost 50 years now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You can leave it on. It's okay. Okay.
And thank you.
Next, if Carol could please come to the podium? And please press the button on the base of the mic. There's a, the button on the base of the mic? Just press that little button. Oh, thank you. And then state your full name and city of residence. Oh, good. And you have three minutes.
Hello. Thank you all for being here. This is a little bit difficult for me because my subject is not really the most pleasant thing. I really wish I didn't have to say anything about it. But we, well, the context is, you know, on the 14th, we had two Democratic people. I mean, Democrat, I'll just say, of the Democratic Party. They were killed in their home. And I know this is distressing for everybody everywhere. We happened to be down in the neighborhood of the Republican office. And we see what, well, we walked by their office, put it that way. And I know that the Democrats from Minnesota were killed on the 14th. And we happened to be there on Monday, on the 16th. And I saw a very large poster in their window with all of our Democratic representatives' pictures and districts displayed, saying these people voted for, of course, the obsession is money and tax increases. I mean, even complaining about raising taxes for schools, you know. So not all of that made sense to me, you know, why they would even complain about having funded schools. But the reason I bring it up is I had a very odd feeling when I was looking at that because it was so soon after the tragedy that happened on Saturday. And I really don't, I know it's free speech, but I guess I'm questioning, and I, I really don't want to go in and, in and talk to them about it. But I just want someone to be aware and maybe just be aware that it's there and, and that they're displaying it. And what else can I say? I, there's also a person. Oh, I live in Everett. I'm sorry. Did I, I skipped something? Yeah, I did. I apologize. I'm Carol Morgan and from Everett. But there's also another business, just a door or two down, Sound Pond. And they take the time to put out a little whiteboard on the sidewalk with kind of scornful comments about what we're doing down there on Hewitt and Whitmore, which is basically a stand to get, you know, for, I guess, what I would call American values. You know, free speech and, you know, taking care of people. And anyway, we're not happy with ICE. And we're, okay, I'm probably going away over time. So, well.
I figured just finish up with one thought.
I, I just want to finish off with saying, I, I just want you to be aware of the poster. And that's it. I guess if you want to take a peek at it or look into it, you know, please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Daniel, if you could please come to the podium? Thank you. And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Daniel Dodson. I am a resident of Everett. And I'm here today with a concern about traffic in the, on Dakota. Dakota is just a little two-block, four-block road that runs between 100th Street and Holly. And, and I saw that there had been some activity tried to be, that was tried to be generated in 2022 by a resident that lives on Dakota. And it struck me. So I went out to look at Dakota, and I recognized that there were a lot of things that are still going on out there. And I provide pictures of those reckless dri, evidence of reckless driving, evidence of excess of speed. In the traffic report for the Traffic Zero 2024, there are 16 accidents on Dakota, six at 100th and 10 at Holly. I also have, in my report, I provided your QR codes to video links and other evidences where school buses had been hit by tra, by, by, by cars. School buses, 133 feet of skid hits a bus, a school bus, okay? I have video of a bus passing on the left during child drop-off. And the residents, I think, have deserved injury controls to help mitigate the traffic problems on that street. And I think that we could put speed bumps down. I think that we could flag those, those traffic speed limit signs so that they're evident. I think that there are things we can do. Those crosswalks are not striped. And that's a provision that's in the code for what Dakota is supposed to have. I'm just concerned, very concerned. And I'd like to ask, I have to bring other concerns back to the council, and I need to do that in future weeks. And I am trying to understand how I can present this information. I'm going to need to present videos. I'm going to need to present links to, to items. And so I'm setting up right now. I want to ask the council to take a look at the Dakota situation, watch the video. It's very important because the traffic engineer said that $15,000, $20,000 was too much to spend to cure these problems on Dakota. And I don't think it's $15,000, $20,000 for speed bumps or flagging traffic signs, for painting crosswalks, and ensuring that those residents that live on that road are not harassed by speeders and reckless driving. If I could get the council to just come to a resolution on that, I'd really appreciate it. I know we have administrative control here to dictate that, that certain things get done. We have legislative body here to help get those things started. And I'm really serious that we have to do something because somebody's going to get hurt. And I'd come back next week and pitch another street and another issue. And I need to make sure that I understand how to do video and how to, and how to get stuff online. So I appreciate your time today, and I really do appreciate that you've given me this moment.
And I just asked that you connect with Jennifer Gregerson from my team so that she can get your information and we can help you get video to the council.
You're very kind. Thank you very much. You guys have a great evening. Thank you, Jennifer. Let me just meet with you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment.
Good. Thank you for that. All right, so on to council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Ben Zarlingo.
Well, one brief comment because I'm not sure it was clear. One of our public commentators, Mr. Van Dalen, was talking about Field Day. You know, there's a real, and, and Mayor Franklin talked about kind of a backup. The Field Day, I used to have friends who worked on that. And the idea is they can set up at almost any place at any time, kind of an independent communications network. All this cellular phones and other digital radios that we assume we always have access to. If there are major disasters around here, some of that will not be available. If none of it's available, those people are entirely independent. They can set up a communication system, short range and long range, and help out our first responders. They can do that independent of all other systems that may be separated, like for a major earthquake or something like that. So kudos to them for doing that. I think they sometimes understand their situation much better and don't always understand how to explain to the rest of us what the benefits of that yearly exercise is. And they do it on a sustained basis with their own power. So it's a, it's a completely independent, standalone system. So anyway, thanks to them for that. I just wanted to make sure that people understood what the benefit was.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse?
A couple of things. This morning, I was at the groundbreaking for the Little Wings Early Learning Academy. Councilmember Ryan was there and the mayor was there. And it was just a wonderful event, really seeing an innovative approach. As we had the presentation last week, it was really exciting. So that was a great way to start the day. I wanted to remind everybody that Everett Transit is seeking public comment on update to its long-range plan. So that is open right now, July 1 through 31st. So if you're really, really eagerly keen on having your input on bus routes, you can go to the everetttransit.org to submit your public comments. In addition to the Everett Fourth of July Parade, which starts at 11:00, don't miss it. There's also events at Jackson Park with the Marshallese community doing some activities. So just a quick reminder on that. Thank you to our new appointees to the Skylar and Shell Megan. Thank you for your willingness to serve. I always am overjoyed when I see folks signing up and lining up to be on our boards and our commissions. And it's a great way to get involved with our city and this community. And so that dedication, that public service, I just wanted to extend my thanks. The, I know the gentleman left, but really appreciate his dedication in giving us the photos and all the information about the Dakota issues. And just to touch on Carol, what you said. I appreciate so much you coming here. And I know it's a nerve-wracking thing to come speak on a microphone in front of council. So I applaud you for coming. And I just want to say that your kindness and your concern is so incredibly thoughtful. Public service is not always something that we think a lot when we go into it. And we know that there's risks, and we know that right now is a very divided time. But I think that when we come into this and we decide to be in public service, it's because we want to serve the community. And we know that we are putting our names out there. We are putting our faces out there, and it's something that we accept to be able to pursue those passions. So thank you for thinking of us. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Bader?
Thanks, Council President. Real quickly, last week, I attended the Association of Washington Cities Meeting, Annual Conference over in Kennewick. Some great presentations on things ranging from copper wire theft to AI for cities to council meeting procedures. And I'll have some handouts to share with my fellow council members here. Hopefully, I can get to that this weekend. There was one other, one notable keynote on the Washington economy. And while there are a lot of indicators out there indicating, make it look like the economy is a place where similar, with earlier recessions, including unemployment increasing. They, one interesting note about Everett was Everett was one of, is one of only four MSAs. I think Metropolitan Statistical Areas, which are kind of like counties or a little bigger sort of, in the state that saw an increase, or an increase in jobs this past, for the first five months of 2025. So was, really felt a little bit proud there that Everett was one of the few that saw job growth in the first five months. So anyhow, just an interesting conference. I encourage my colleagues to think about going to it in future years. I don't know where it is next, oh, Spokane next year, I think. But it was worthwhile, and I think it's good information that I look forward to sharing with you all on that and possible things Everett can look at and do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thanks. Good afternoon, evening. The Port Gardener Neighborhood Association is hosting a community garage sale on Saturday, July 12th. So next Saturday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And for neighbors to sign up, the deadline is tomorrow, July 3rd. So if you live in the Port Gardener Neighborhood and you're interested in participating, please email portgardener.everett@gmail.com. It's a $15 fee to, to get a sign and to be a part of the map that they're going to be publishing online. So we're trying to do our best to shadow the MOAGs, Community Garage Sale. And so it'd be great to get some more signups on the books. And other than that, I just wanted to thank Carol for her kind words. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tui?
Yeah, I too want to thank our commenters for coming tonight. Appreciate all of the information. We had the Community Health and Safety Council Committee meeting earlier this evening at 5:00. And we had a great update on youth violence prevention programs that we're working on and like the mayor brought up. We also had criminal justice impacts from the 2025 new legislation that passed in Olympia. So Lacey gave us a big update on that. So very interesting. If you want to find out more, I would watch our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, on to administrative report.
I just have two little items. One, not actually related to city work, but I think of some significance for the community. The state is implementing a big repair project on the Ship Canal Bridge or on I-5. The last time they did major repair work was 40 years ago. So in a few weeks, starting the weekend of July 18th, over that weekend, northbound I-5 will be fully closed from I-90 up to 45th Street. So you'll have to head over to 405 or alternate routes through that entire weekend. So that's starting on Friday night, the 18th, through Monday morning. Then for a month, it's down to two lanes, which all day long sounds really miserable in a, in a, in a car. So if you're visiting Seattle this summer, it's a good time to try transit. Community Transit has a page with some tips, communitytransit.org/travel-2-seattle. They also have a workshop next Tuesday, the 8th, at the Marysville Library from 4:00 to 7:00. Not too far from Everett. And if you go, you get a little commuter kit and a free, an Orca card with unlimited rides for the month. So if you want to take a free trip, you can go to their open house up there. So good time to try transit through July and August this summer. I, oh gosh, I didn't, I cut to the end date, but it ends like around August 21st, that closure, with another full closure of northbound I-5 that final weekend. So like two little bookend full closures. So good time to try transit, community transit, but of course, most importantly, Everett Transit. And speaking of Everett Transit, they've started their outreach for the long-range transit plan, looking at the next 20 years of transit. So there's some flyers that are at the desk. There's an online open house this month that's just launched. They'll have information booths at the farmer's market on the 13th and Nubian Jam on the 26th, and open houses on July 17th and 24th. So it's a good time to, you know, try transit and then share your thoughts on what you think, you think the future of Everett Transit should look like. And that's all I have.
Council President?
Yeah.
Good. Thanks. Sorry, Jennifer, thanks for that. As someone whose day job is in Seattle, I'm acutely aware of that. But would just additionally point out that the express lanes during those four weeks will be open northbound, 24/7. So there'll be no southbound express lane. So this will definitely impact southbound traffic as well. So yes, use transit, work from home, stay in Everett, spend, yeah, be here. Yeah.
Yes, spend your money here. Come on. Thank you for that. Okay, on to our city attorney. Deputy City Attorney Ramsey?
I have no comment, but I am asking for an executive session tonight to discuss four legal matters pursuant to RCW 423110 sub 1 sub I for 20 minutes with no action to follow.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move to our consent items. We have seven consent items. Do I hear motion?
Councilmember Bader, some moves.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Motion's been made in second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, moving on to our proposed action item, item number eight, Council Bill 2506-38. I've been read on the record, the final reading is July 9, 2025. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to item number nine, which is first reading, Council Bill 2506-39, Adopt Amendment to Ordinance 3196-10. It's the International Property Maintenance Code, EMC 16.09.010. Third and final reading is July 16, 2025. Do I have any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Fosse?
Very briefly, could somebody explain what this is?
This is basically a routine update to adopt changes that the Building Code Council, Building Code Council adopted and to roll those into our own code. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, hearing none. We will break for 20 minutes for executive session. Okay. Hearing none. We will break for 20 minutes for executive session.